I don't think we should go ahead and get started. I don't know if Mr. Braden is going to join us. But so on our agenda for today, we are discussing the new salary ordinance. Ordinance adjusting certain salary ranges and amending ordinance number 67 2021. We're going to have some financial recovery plan updates and then talk a little bit about the then and now ordinance that's or resolution that's coming in our fax or our meeting this evening. So, Mr. Stitt, really, this is kind of your ball. You're talking to us a bunch.
Sure. So, ordinance 67 2021 establishes the positions and salary ranges for all the appointed people in the city. This 67 2021 added three positions at that time, a deputy treasurer, a full-time administrative assistant, which had previously been part-time, and a new title, which is recreation assistant, part-time, hourly, where the other ones are salaries. So it added some new positions. When we got into this year, a position opened up, which is legal secretary paralegal. That was a shared position. It was a union position, but a new union position was created in the city. So under a memorandum of understanding with the collective bargaining units, we were able to establish an appointed position to be the paralegal, that the law director can pick the person who works in his office. The problem is, we didn't have that position legally existing. So we had to create this ordinance we're reviewing tonight to not only establish the position, but also establish the salary ranges. And looking at the salary ranges that we had for our existing people who work for the city or for positions that are open and need to be filled, the high-end range of the salary range was pretty low. So when somebody is appointed to one of these positions, they start at the base and their appointing authority, the person hiring them, which is an elected official, can hire them starting up to 10% above the base. If this person is exceptional, or if you're looking for a certain type, you can come to council and say, you know what, it should be a little more than 10%. And we did that with the assistant deputy auditor just a few months ago, hiring somebody that was probably 15% or so above the base salary. But the bases are pretty low. As we move on and we, people stay with the city for longer periods of time, they tend to cap out at the high end of the salary range pretty quickly. After five, six years, they, they're at the top. So what we wanted to do was look at the salary ranges, short-term, take the high end, the top range for everybody, and move that up, leaving the bottom range for most of these the same unless they were ones that were $15 an hour or less. So we took the ones that are part-time, they stay at 15 hours, but I'm pretty sure everybody else on here is making at least $17 an hour at that base thing as being a full-time employee for the city. Raising the top ranges allows for two things. It allows the current people that are close to the high end, who do a lot of really good work for the city and have a lot of experience and have been here for years, to be able to have a little more room and get some pay increases over time. The other thing it allows us to do is, if there is a department head that wants to hire someone with specific set of expertise and wants to walk into those meetings and say, I can offer you X amount of dollars, it gives him more wiggle room that they can come to council and say, I'm going to be interviewing some people. I would like the permission to go up to $75,000 on this position, where it used to be capped at 72. So looking at those two things, we thought it was time because we were making an ordinance that adds a new position to raise those top levels. This is something that really should be done annually. We should be looking at a year from now, coming in and saying, you know, we looked and studied other municipalities, we got more information in, and here are the fair ranges that we're in, and looking at adjusting these ranges on an annual position. Not that it has to be done annually, but it should be looked at because this stagnated for a long time and people just stayed at a relatively low rate of pay. We didn't do that this time. We really just felt moving that top level up and taking some time to probably promote something for next year or later this year and adjust the salary ranges. Any questions about that?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. I mean, if you're going to pay someone with the experience that the city needs, I feel like that eventually is going to bring in more money down the line.
Yeah. And I know from looking at other cities that our rates were on the lower side in general, it seemed like.
Yeah.
And I think that raising that top level, I mean, we're not bumping the minimums up on everything, but we are allowing ourselves having the opportunity to negotiate with people with experience and bring that experience in by making it a broader range.
We're sticking with the 10% as you come to council for that.
10% is what's established in the policy and procedure manual for the city as it's ordained. So, and it says that here at the bottom also. So you can go bottom up to 10 or come and talk to you guys. And as I explained to a different department head that was going to start looking for somebody, I said, you can get that permission to say, I want to be able to negotiate for this range. You can get that before you even interview people, if you know what the market's bearing at the time. This just gives them that bigger range to work with.
That's good.
That makes sense.
So it would be good to do all three readings on this just because there is one person I'm sure they would like to be interviewing and hiring and that position doesn't exist yet, and that's the law secretary paralegal.
Okay.
Do you want to do the FRP update now?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So, as you know, we went over the FRP a few weeks ago and then presented it to council, some final changes being made over the weekend before Tuesday's meeting. And on Tuesday at 3:15 in the afternoon, I got an email from the state auditor who's reviewing this requesting nine pages of additional changes. So what was presented to you did not have those nine pages. So we had a Zoom meeting the following week with the mayor and our two financial supervisors and talked about what changes really are material and need to be made. And there were changes that would make a material difference to the balances. And so we did shift some things around. One of the changes was really a mistake on my part, which was, the way the spreadsheet works is it looks at what everyone's health insurance is and the amount that we're paying for an individual, each person's health insurance this year, and then looking at next year and making a increase of 6%. And then each year, it looks back to the previous year and increases it 6%. So that carries down over a five-year period. This year was unusual because we did something last year that we had never done before. We had, we got into an 18-month contract with the health insurance plan. So what our January 1st rates are for people are the same rate that they were in 20, the beginning of January of 2021, right? So 2022 is that rate, but the second half of 2022 is going to go up 4%. But when I took 2023, I looked back to January's number, not December's number. So there was a 4% increase that gets hit that doesn't carry through. So basically, it was looking like the beginning of 23 was going to be the same numbers as the end of 21, which was true for 2022 was the same as the end of 2021. So I had to adjust everything over. And so we just had to take that column on the spreadsheet from 20, and if you look at the spreadsheet that was sent out, the current one that you guys have, that column of health insurance costs for 2023's tab is a static number that equals what 2021's is. It did not carry the N number forward.
Okay.
That did make a difference. When you're talking about 4%, I mean, that's half a million dollars after five years because it's compounded. The other thing, which is, when it came to the police payroll, so within most of the union contracts, there is built-in step increases. And most of the time, it's like, if you're at this level this year, you're making this amount, you're making this amount. So I built those steps into the, into the public works, for example. And you might one year go from making 20, 25 an hour to the next year, making 2053 an hour. It's just this steady increase, and it's about a 2%, 2.5% that it goes up depending on the contract. With police and fire, they actually bump to a new level. So we have a patrolman one, so you have a PO non-certified, then a police officer certified, then a patrolman one, patrolman two, patrolman three, all the way up to patrolman five. The number of sergeants, lieutenants, they stay kind of frozen. As we do that, we're adding in how many years people are, we're looking at their longevity pay, and we're calculating in. So from that standpoint of looking at an individual, you do want to track and look at the individual because their longevity pay that's paid out is based on the number of years that they're in, as opposed to just saying, well, we have five patrol ones and seven patrol twos. You need it attached to a person because their benefits are based on how many years that position's been here. Well, two problems happen. Number one, the starting numbers for the steps were based on what they had paid January 1st of 2021. But during 2021, they actually got a 2.5% increase. So all those numbers were 2.5% off. The other thing is, if I walk everybody up, right, patrolman one becomes patrolman two next year, then patrolman three the following year, you only go a couple of years and all we have is patrol fives. So I kept it to where I'm like, well, we're going to only have so many patrol ones, so many patrol twos. But they said, no, because you're tracking individuals and you're looking at things like what that individual's longevity pay is, and you have to walk that individual up. So the way this is built now is, a couple of years, everybody's a patrol five. There's no patrol ones. There's no new hires. Nobody's retiring and leaving. Is that a bit of a wash? Do we, do we look at that and go, well, you're playing that off because we have separation pay? How much separation pay is there on average? Well, I had $150,000 built in for this year. The other years, it's pretty much, if everyone's going to patrol five, when they retire, they're going to take cash out, but the new patrol one will make less money, so that'll all even out. So anyway, if I built it the way they wanted to build it, where all these employees walk up to their maximum, it makes a difference. So what you see is higher, the fire went up a little bit, the police went up some, and again, it's over five years to where, you know, a $200,000 a year difference makes a million dollars at the end. So we plugged all those numbers in. We made sure all the steps for the appointed people are correct. I applied the new ordinance that we're looking at here. We applied the new contracts where they are in their negotiations, and it made the expense go up over those last few years more because it compounds over time. And when we're talking about what somebody makes now and what they make next year, you have to add 3% raise this year, 3% the next year, 3% the next year, plus changing things around. So our new formulas we came up with showed that we did not have our $1.6 million carryover. So the mayor and I went back to the capital plan and on Sunday went through and said, well, we're moving this to this year. We're not going to do this. We're looking for a grant for this. And now it's about 1.6. I think it's 1.547 on the new plan that I've now had to send to the state.
Okay.
So we met our, we met our legal requirements by passing the ordinance, passing a plan. But the state, again, delivering me nine pages the day we were, and I'm not kidding, nine pages, the day that we had to present it was a killer. And so what they did is they said, we're going to talk to the commission and say, we're going to take it back to council. They're approving the new one that's written. Take it back to council, probably on the meeting on the 24th of May, and then June 9th, the fiscal commission meets and we'll pass it.
So, quick question on now how you're tracking, do you have it, like, is it just a basic equation of like, this is what we think we're going to do? Or are you like tracking, like, we have patrol one, this many patrol one people, this many patrol two?
It's by each person.
Each person?
So that's why it kind of maxes out because you're tracking each person.
So you have each individual one now?
Yeah. And it's each person to depend how much they're getting paid now, how much that equates when it, the raises go up.
When we, someone leaves, someone retires, is that just an adjustment that we make every year?
Yeah, so at the end of the year, I'll ask, and so that's another thing to kind of think about.
Yeah.
I got these reports, these payroll projections in November because I'm working on it then. Built this whole spreadsheet, did the payroll, presented it to them at the end of January, I think it was February 8th or 9th, presented it to them. Well, a lot of things have changed between February 8th and 9th. First of all, they've changed from November. We tried to make the changes, but in November and December, did we really know what the current contracts that we are negotiating are going to be? So you kind of get to this point where you're chasing a runaway horse because you can't keep up with all the changes that are going on and like, so you have to kind of get to that point where you're like, fine, this is where we're stopping. But again, I'll send you the spreadsheet and you can forward it to them. If you look on the tabs across the bottom, there's one that says, it's in yellow, GF printable. That's the document that prints out that you see on the ordinance. All the other tabs, revenue, expense, they sort of all pull into one master spreadsheet, master expense, that then spits all that out into the GF printable. General fun. The tabs that say literally payroll 22, payroll 23, payroll 24, those have all the data that I'm talking about. So you could scroll through those, look all the way over, you can see how much everyone's paying for their health insurance, what they're paying, what we're paying for that, what's the longevity pay of somebody in my office making, you know, it's all, it's all there.
So how, how much was moved around and where?
Probably, I think about 1.5 million. And it was really adjusting, there were a lot of things within the capital plan that talked about, like, building repairs to be named.
Yeah.
Right? So a lot of those came off. Other things, there were some big ticket purchases that we looked at and said, well, maybe we're not going to purchase this, maybe we'll finance it, or maybe we will look for grant money to help support this. But those things are three or four or five years down the road.
Yeah.
So instead of just saying, oh, three years from now, we're buying this thing for $350,000, why don't we put 50 in there for matching funds and try to get a grant? But from a budgetary standpoint, the capital plan is showing that we're thinking about what we're doing with money in the future. So this year, very few things changed from the capital plan. I think there were a couple of keys that just had money in them that just says projects to be named that were moved back.
Okay.
In the future, we took a lot of those kind of abstract ones off because it's nice to think what we're going to do in five years or think what we're going to do in three years, but we don't know what our revenue is going to be like this year. So that's really more of a planning tool, but that's where the majority of the changes came from.
Okay.
And there is, when you get the spreadsheet, a tab that says capital projects.
Yeah.
Click now. That all imports to the master, which all exports to the printable.
Okay.
So you'll see they all sort of come together on this one sheet. And on the, when you're looking at the master tab, when you get to it, you'll see there's a blue column and it'll say FRP 2021.
Yeah.
That's what's in the current plan that we're operating under now.
Yeah.
So you can see the numbers that changed from what we passed last year to what we're looking at this year through all six years. Well, yeah, five years.
So.
So there's a lot more work went into it.
So we know that the, from when we looked at the FRP the last time, that that's really that number at the very end in the lower right-hand corner?
Yep.
That lets us pay our bills.
In January.
January. Is that still in a good spot at the end of five years?
Yeah, it's just under 1.6 million. Our target's anywhere from 1.4 to 1.6. I think it's like 1.574 or something like that. So it's, it's close. But we, we targeted it to do that. We also made a few small changes because there's some projects that have already kind of started and where the mayor was like, well, we're not doing that. We did this other thing. And we take this out. And I think a good example of, just a small example, is, you know, there's an electrical charging station that's about to go online down the quarter there behind Walgreens. We got a grant for that. So we don't have to budget the full amount to put that in. So that money came off. But that's why that decrease, it's like, well, we only have to put X amount of dollars in, we just put that money in. But again, it's always changing.
With the, moving around the money with the capital expenses, so that's a conversation that you and the mayor kind of worked through.
Oh, yeah.
And the mayor just.
So, yeah, we, just to give you an idea of the mechanics of how it worked, before I left to go to, to my conference, I sent him an email that has the file on it. And I said, here's where our balance is after all these corrections. And then I went through and went through the capital plan and marked in red or purple all of the things I thought we could move off. And then I marked in yellow all the things that maybe could be changed the amount on. And then he reviewed that, and then on Sunday, we came into my office, and I have three screens, and I put it up and we, he looks at one screen and I look at the other, and we just walked through. Well, change this. Oh, this has got a grant now. I still want to keep that, but move it over here. And we spent two hours doing that.
Okay.
And that's what I sent up to the state then Sunday afternoon that I'll send you.
Okay.
But yeah, any changes to the capital plan is him. The other thing that they did say, the narrative, they wanted, there's pages of stuff they talked about where they want sort of the assumptions, the narrative in the beginning to go into more detail about some of the things that are going on. And so the mayor is actually rewriting or adding additional things there.
Is that a lot of those items where we, you were like, well, when we get audited or at the end of it, we're already doing it? Like some of those items where you said, like, we don't really need any call-up right now because once we kind of present everything to the state at the end.
Yeah. It's more in the beginning section of the FRP where he talks about, we're adding a person over here. Or like one of the things they talked about, the electric charging station.
Yeah.
Well, you're putting in their electric vehicles, but you didn't discuss how you're paying for the electricity that you're giving to people to put in their cars.
Okay.
So we need to have that narrative that says, well, we've contracted with a service, that there's an app, and they collect a fee, and they send us a check every month. That has to be in there. There's still a lot of just ones where they wanted more detail about Pay Corps, like, tell us exactly how much they're charging us. So you could put that in there as a separate item. They just wanted more detail on things, and I think that beginning narrative part, probably you'll see two or three pages added to it.
Okay.
Yes, with more, more items or more detail.
Nine pages.
The goal being, and the reason we're trying to make this as accurate as possible, is this will hopefully be our last one. Because I don't want to do this again.
Yeah.
I had a question. Oh, more of a statement, actually, I wanted to make is, if anybody's listening, it's typically, in my experience, when, when costs go up, it's capital projects that get hit.
Yeah.
And, but it's often capital projects is what the public sees is, is when we're doing those, that's what feels like.
Yeah.
We're making positive progress. And, and so it just, it just pays to keep in mind that there's a lot that goes in to keep in the city running, including making salaries correct and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
That, that you don't always think about when you're super concerned about getting roads fixed. But you can see what just, you know, 2% here and there, when it accumulates, adds up and causes big shifts to have to be made in other areas.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially with inflation being as it is, with those capital improvement projects, we may forecast that it costs 1 million, but maybe in two years, it'll cost 1.5 million because of the cost of materials going up. So it's just hard to.
Within the, within the FRP itself, I had built in, starting back in January, when I built that section, for materials and supplies and contractual expenses, a 4% annual inflationary rate. Past that.
Yeah.
But I can't go back and keep, you know, like I said, you chase this thing forever.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Thompson, I did just email you the copy.
Great.
So he can send that on.
Thank you.
There's a little tab that's kind of fun that I, because I, Mr. Thompson knows this because he's known me for a while. I like pie charts. So there's a, there's a tab called charts that just has a few little bits of info on it that you might find interesting.
I like that.
And then if, if you want to see a breakdown of, like, how much each year is personnel, contractual materials, supplies, capital expenses, there's on the tab that says GF import, which is a file that happens before all the rounding happens, that tab has all that data on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Kind of off to the right at the top. I'll probably move that to the charts one, whenever I stop messing with this. Now, we're still waiting for the state to get back to us. Again, we have that target date of May 24th so that the June 9th meeting of the fiscal commission can review and approve this. You know, June 20, or May 23rd, I could get another 10 pages of stuff. So that tends to be, they tend to give it to you all at once. We'll see.
Any other thoughts or questions on the FRP?
No. Thank you for all the explanation.
Last thing on the agenda is the discussion around the resolution for the then and now approval.
So.
Mr. Stitt.
A revised code 5705.41, which is the third page of the packet that I handed you there, discusses basically a purchase orders, right? When they talk about a certificate must be drawn, right? And the wording that happens there in 5705.41 D1 really talks about the fact, you can't enter into an agreement, a contract, or buy anything without first having the certificate approved by the auditor. And underlined in bold, I did not underline bold that, this is from the website, it says, every such contract made without such a certificate shall be void, and no warrant shall be issued in payment on any amount thereon. Meaning if you buy something for the city, we don't have to pay for it unless you have the purchase order first. If you look at 5705.45, sorry, these pages aren't numbered, at the bottom, it's liability for wrongful payments from public funds enforcement. It says, an officer, employee, or any person who issues any order contrary to 5705.41 of the revised code, or expends any authorized the expenditure of any public funds, or who authorizes or executes any contract contrary to those sections. And last payments thereon, I mean, it goes on and on and on. But basically what it says is, such officer, employee, or other person shall be jointly and severally liable in person and upon any official bond that he has given to such subdivision to the extent of the law of any payments of such void claim. And then in bold below that, it talks about how your prosecuting attorney should go after them to get the money. What this is, it says, you got to have a purchase order first. You have to have the certificate from the auditor's office that says you have the authority to spend the taxpayer's money. Because this is the taxpayer's money. It's not the city's money. This is something we should jealously guard and dutifully account for. And if people want to go out and spend money, the law says, you can't. Every invoice I get must have a PO dated before the date of the invoice. Audit will come and look at that. And that's something that will be hit with a compliance issue on. And if it's something that happens recurrently, then it's something the state can go after them to collect the money. So if you buy something, you bought it. Now, there is a process for emergencies, and it's called a then and now certificate. A good example is, let's say there's not appropriations for something, but an emergency happens and something breaks. Then the auditor or the deputy auditor has a legal authority to issue a PO. Then the auditor or the deputy auditor has a legal authority to issue a PO now to pay for something that will have appropriations later then. And then appropriations then later changed to match that. If there was an emergency and something needed to be bought and you don't have the few days that it takes to process a purchase order, like a garage door breaking somewhere and you've got to get a mechanic out or a locksmith out to something, then you can do that as an emergency. You should first notify the auditor's office or the auditor by phone. If you can't reach them, you can do that emergency and then present it to us within the next business day or two and say, wow, this thing happened. And we'll go, that's okay, I'll issue a then and now. What a then and now is not for, the ones that we issue, is you buy something and you never got the PO, and then you get the invoice a month and a half later, and then you turn in a purchase order request with the invoice. It wasn't an emergency. It wasn't an emergency. If it was an emergency, you would have told me a month ago, two months ago. So I have a real problem authorizing that as a then and now because the state auditors will come through and look at this and they'll go, wait, what, what was your justification? You're supposed to be guarding the taxpayer's money. You're the auditor. And I know everybody just thinks what I do is paperwork, but it's not, right? It is making sure that people are handling the taxpayer's money, that precious resource, in the correct way. And there's manuals. This is just the, this is the direct laws for the 2022 Ohio Compliance Settlement, 133 pages. I have to make sure we follow these rules. There's Ohio Revised Code that has very strict language in here and says, you know, you can't just go out and just buy stuff and then tell me about it later. I know you think it's important, but you violated the law. And in some cases where I get these back and go, but you did this six weeks ago, you know better, I'm not giving you a pass. I always like to say, you know, I'm like the traffic cop that caught you going 50 through the school zone. I didn't write the law, I didn't speak. I can listen to you and in some emergency case, maybe let you go, but I have to issue tickets. And just sitting there and issuing a then and now blindly over and over and over is not what should be done. Anyone who spends money for the city, it is their responsibility to know the laws and the ordinance of the state of Ohio that regulates what authority they have and what the processes are in order to spend the taxpayer's money. We publish in my office and it's been sent to every department head, the financial primer that talks about this process in detail and talks about the penalties that the law says, you bought it without the PO. If I don't give you a then and now, it sounds like you owe the city this much money and the prosecuting attorney should go after it. So a then and now is something that is taken very seriously. It will be audited. This then and now, if you decide to pass it, auditors will pull it and look at it in the beginning of next year and will possibly have some very specific questions over it because we get audited from the outside every year. And it goes through the regular audit cycle through our private auditors, and then it goes through the state. So this is finance meeting. You're fine. So anyway, yeah, that's what that is, but here's a little bit of information. Really, the big one for us with purchase orders is 5705.41. Then and now's are page 11 in this large document. They are also dealt with under there, but it is that concept for something that should be used for emergencies. I'm going to quote exactly, it's 5705.41 is the then and now. And 5705.45 is the penalty phase. So that, that describes what happens if you don't follow that. Now, this little section of, of our revised codes, there's a little cheat sheet on the top. This is just something I put together years ago when I first took over. The supplement is something that's printed out every year. If you guys want a copy of this, it's a PDF that I get from the state. But it talks in detail about all of the compliance issues that they are looking at on an annual basis and kind of what the changes are and what specifically they're looking for. But I've issued this year, then and now's 10, 12. I mean, we do it regularly and it's usually something like, you know, here's a, like a, say there's a professional service organization that we belong to and it automatically renews and it sends us the bill. And the person didn't like put the PO in, and it's like, oh, here's our $100 that we owe for this professional organization annual due. You know, those types of things, that's different than somebody who goes out and buys things.
Or emergency situation where the department can't function.
Correct. Do you have any questions on this?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, no, thank you, you explained it.
Yeah, thank you for.
Probably be seeing a few more of these because we've got some other things. We, we look at invoice dates and PO request dates, not always the approval date because they might have requested it and I just hadn't approved it yet. There might have been a delay. There was a time in March where we closed down processing purchase orders for about two weeks in the middle of March because our financial software essentially went blind and we could not see how much people had in their budget left. So until, and that was related to our Paycor provider. So until we had that ironed out, I said, no new POs unless it's an emergency for two weeks. This is not in that time.
Not impacted by it, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think that'll wrap it up for this meeting unless anybody has any other things they would like to discuss. Nope, all right. We'll call this, the meeting of the Finance Committee adjourned. Thanks.